The regular meeting of the City Planning and Zoning Board will come to order as today is July the 2nd, and it is approximately 1:30. And we have several items on our agenda today. And Tim, is there any additions or deletions?
The only thing I'd like to add, items for C and D, ones legisla-- they're a combo. So normally, we would hold those together, read both items. You'll have to take separate actions on them, but we'll hold it as a quasi judicial hearing. It makes it simple. That's how we normally handle these combos.
So they both run through quasi judicial?
Right. We'll hold a quasi judicial hearing. But you will have to take separate actions on each of them.
Any other additions or deletions? Okay, approval of our minutes. We have two to approve. First, we have the June 4th, and then the June 18th. Have everybody a chance to read the minutes from the June 4th meeting?
Yes.
Looking for a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
We have second on the approval minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The second meeting minutes are from June 18th. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have first and second. All in favor approving minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Approved. At this point in time, we're opening up the floor to public comment. And you can speak on anything you'd like to speak at this time. If though, in particular, you would like to speak on a particular item coming before us, you can also do it at that time, or you can do both if you'd like. But in most cases, I would suggest you wait to the item that's being heard. So anybody who'd like to come forward now? Seeing none? What about our quasi judicial? We'll swear those people in at a later point.
Yeah, we'll swear them when we get them.
Okay, fine. Okay, then, the first item is an application submitted by Collins, Brown, Caldwell, Barquette, Garvalia, and Lawn to amend the future land use map designation, GU government institutional, public use to RL residential low for property located at 665 20th Street. It's on the southwest corner of 6th Avenue and 20th Street. And the number on that one is C1500002FLUM-map. And Tim, you're not-- you're gonna get-- is Sherry?
No, it's gonna be handled by Gail.
Oh, Gail's gonna handle it?
Yes.
I thought-- Ms. Gail's gonna handle it? Okay.
Yes. This is the-- the former Osceola Magnet School was located at this site. It's currently is vacant. This is discussing the existing site conditions and infrastructure. And in discussing the neighborhood land use patterns and zoning, if you see the map, the-- to the north of the site, the property is zoned, both POI and C1, you have professional medical office and a hotel. To the east of this site, the property is zoned R1 with single-family homes and a church. And the future land use is residential low. To the south of the site, you have both RM, which is located in the city, and the county has multifamily residential. Let's see, it's residential medium density. They have both multifamily and single-family zoning in those areas. To the east of the site, the future land use is residential medium. The zoning is RM 1012 and R1, and you have both multifamily and single-family residences in that area. And the property is located in the urban service area of the city. And the transportation facilities, to the north is State Road 60, to the east is 6th Avenue, which is a county road. And both of those roads are well under the level of Service D. And then, to do a look at the existing land use and the proposed future land use, this is basically like a housekeeping change because the property was zoned-- I mean, future land use was GU government, which is not intended to be applied to properties in residential areas. It's more for a more intense use for water and sewer treatment plants, public work, repairs, and outdoor storage yards, or large government complexes. And the requested change to residential low is intended for areas of the city, which have the single-family homes. And then, there's also the conditional uses, which are allowed in those areas. As it is right now, that property wouldn't be able to be developed as anything because the government is not appropriate for the residential zoning. We've reviewed the land use amendment, and we find that it's justified as the reason stated previously, that the site was the former Osceola School. It's now vacant. It's been purchased. And the property owners are planning on having it changed to residential low with the hopes of building a church there. And we find that it's-- we reviewed it to see if it's consistent with the Section 65.22i4. We looked at land use amendment policy 1.5, which states that the city shall regulate land use categories in the future land use map by establishing compatible zoning districts in the land development regulations, which this would take care of that problem because the GU is not appropriate for the zoning that is there. And also, the residential low would be appropriate because it is-- allows the low single-family dwelling units, and also the conditional uses, which are permitted in that zoning district. And we took a look at the review on impacts on the facilities, and we looked at the proposed most intense use, which would be single-family dwellings. And at the maximum, they would be able to have 87 lots, which would be less than-- I mean, they wouldn't be able to have that many once you put roads and infrastructure in. And to look at the school concurrency, if it were developed at that most intense use, it would have to be reviewed by the conditional school capacity available, availability determination letter by the school district at that time. But right now, the applicant, the property owner, has received an exemption because of their proposed use at that site. And we have looked at the proposed amendment and determined that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, compatible with the surrounding land uses, and is not expected to cause adverse impacts on the environment or the provision of public services. And based on this analysis, we are recommending that the Planning and Zoning Board recommend that the City Council approve the proposed future land use map amendment designating the property to RL residential low.
Does the board have questions of staff?
Yes. The one concern I have is with the traffic. That whole area there is getting to be very difficult. And I noticed that they were going to be ordering a traffic study submitted under separate cover. This was back in the end of May, in that letter. Do we know anything more about that?
Traffic--
May 29th is when the letter was written from the law firm. And it said, "A traffic study will be ordered and submitted under separate cover."
It was decided the traffic study wasn't needed at this point in time. Basically, when they come in with a site plan, they'll look at it. But then, we're already ahead of ourselves. But obviously, it's a church owns the property. The church is gonna have less impact than the school had on traffic.
Yeah.
Because mainly, they're-- just the peak hours are different. So that's not an issue. I told them not to submit a-- we didn't need a traffic study.
Okay.
But if anything changes when they go to development, then obviously--
Right. And at that point--
--the traffic impact will be--
--we look at the site plan, and we look at traffic impact.
But the credit for a school being there, as I said--
Right.
--schools are pretty intensive, so.
Yeah, with the bus traffic and parents, yeah. Okay.
Pick up and drop up.
Oh, yeah.
Additional questions, staff?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
And my questions are probably to be dealt with. The answers are probably to be dealt with when the site plan comes through. But the question about the curb cuts that now exist on 20th Street, are those automatically grandfathered in? Or since we're changing the land use map--
I think we're--
Will that be--
The state's gonna look at--
Neutralized.
--on State Route 60. So there may be some changes in the curb cuts. I mean, coming in with the new development, a lot of times, they're gonna go to a higher level of a standard. Some of the older things, if there's a problem with interference with the intersection, that'll be looked at during the site planning process.
And that's the state?
Well, the state will be looking at State Route 60, and our staff, Public Works, will be looking at it too. So we're all going to look at this.
Okay. And the second question I had was, while we're recommending that the designation be changed, there's no assurance that a church will ever be built on this site while--
Well, that's true.
So we have to look at it--
Well, we're--
--based on single-family development.
Well, the-- that-- it already has R1 zoning. Basically, there's nothing you can do on the property. Education, as she-- as Ms. Lafferty pointed out, public administrative uses, wastewater, there are uses you can't do. So our feeling was, just as a Saint Ed's, and you weren't on the board then, it was a misapplication of the future land use. If you look at the definition of what that is, the description, it doesn't meet what it was done incorrectly, in my opinion. And I've-- and that's been my opinion for 10 years now on this. And so where we have these, it's not a problem. It's when the schools disappear, then we get into these problems. And they were-- it's been noted for a while on this one, they had to be changed.
And then, finally, most churches have schools. How does that fit--
It's not material at this time, our discussion. It'll come up in the site plan. Everything-- remember, even a church will require conditional use in this district.
Correct.
Okay. So if a school's involved, that will be involved too, if they were to come back with a school. That's exactly right.
And traffic studies will--
And that-- yes, there's gonna be a certain level that has to be looked at.
Thank you.
Okay.
Additional questions, staff? Seeing none. Would the applicant like to come forward and make your presentation? You're not making a presentation. Okay. No, I don't want you to.
Oh, come on. You can say hello.
You always have something to say.
Good afternoon. My name is Bruce Barquette. Working for the applicant, representing them on this comprehensive plan amendment. I think Ms. Lafferty covered it correctly. This is just a ministerial function at this point, to correct an error. Right now, your zoning is not in compliance with your comprehensive plan. And the appropriate designation is in the zoning, not in the plan. So we're just making that correction. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer it. But that's why I didn't want to come up in the first place. I didn't really have anything to say.
Does the applicant have any-- any questions of the applicant? No? Thank you, Bruce.
Thanks very much.
And Mr. Chairman, if you could just open it up for public comment?
I will.
Thank you.
Would you like to open it up for public comment? Anybody like to make a comment? Please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Board, your discretion, discussion?
That's very straightforward.
Makes sense.
I'm looking for a motion, then, to approve?
I make a motion. We approve staff's recommendation.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
You got a second? Is it a roll call?
No discussion.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Dag?
Yes.
Mr. Kahoy?
Yes.
Ms. Polansky?
Yes.
Mrs. Manous?
Yes.
Mr. Lauffer?
Yes.
Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
We look forward to that site plan coming back.
The next item on the agenda is an ordinance to the city of Vero Beach, Florida relating to the restaurants dealing with or in alcoholic beverages located within 500 feet of a school facility providing for conflict inseparability and providing for an effective date. And Tim, you're gonna do this one, I believe?
Yes, I'm going to do this one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In my background staff report, I pointed out in 2010, the city had amended its code to bring our alcoholic beverage distance requirements from schools into compliance with state statutes. And at that time, when we did that, there were-- the statutes had the ability for local governments to set up exemptions in there. And one of the exemptions for restaurants, which derive more than 51% of their revenue from non-alcoholic beverages and food, to be within the 500-foot limit of schools. At that time, it was decided that, I believe at the City Council, decided to put some time limits on that, that basically would restrict it during the school day time. So any other time, alcoholic beverages could be served at these restaurants, but not during the school days, in between 7:00 and AM in the morning and 4:00 in the afternoon. The one other thing that happened when we did the amendment, prior to that, when we measured, there was a 500-foot distance separation in our code, but it was measured differently. The-- now, in the code, it's "as the crow flies." Then, it was how you walk around a block to get. So it did change some of that. So we had a-- showing a graphic of what the distance requirements are now, and you can see the extent of it. And what we found out is, in looking at that, it definitely, for instance, on South 14th Avenue, and that part of downtown, a lot of the restaurants, Avanzare, Bocci, those could not-- would not have been able to serve alcohol during school days. But they were under the old distance requirements. Now, one of the-- it used to be-- I think it's called-- it's changed names. It used to be Burp. It isn't allowed to serve alcohol. It's right there in the corner of 14th Avenue and 19--
They're not there anymore.
Yeah. It's a new restaurant at that location. But we also got some inquiries from a developer who were looking to put a microbrewery in on the 14th Avenue. And clearly, it would be a restaurant, at least meet that requirement, the 51%. But he'd be precluded from doing that, feeling he would not be able to financially have a good investment if he did that, if they aren't able to serve during the school days during that time. We also looked at it, and I think it shows you the extent of it. There's been a lot of discussion and emphasis on looking at a cultural arts village. And we believe that this would have a detrimental, a dampening effect on the viability of that, since you want to have cafes and that in that district. This would exclude that during these times. So the staff looked at ways we could change this. And basically, our recommendation, and it's in this ordinance, would we just exclude, remove the time limits on it? We'd still have the exemption. And these are just restaurants. These are not bars that are serving more alcohol, you know, more revenue in alcohol than they are getting in non-alcoholic beverages and food. So that was our recommendation. And I believe this was our recommendation the first time we did this. So we believe this is important for economic purposes, and it's justified. We did an evaluation, the staff report. I won't go through it all. But we believe it's very consistent with the standards that are required for a text amendment. Obviously, it's a policy decision, but it does have ramifications for future development and redevelopment of that area. So unless you have some questions to me on this?
The only concern I have is painting this all with, you know, one brush and show all of our schools that we have. We've got Beechland--
We've looked at it. This is-- this, other than the high school, and there may be some down there, there isn't really any others that are really impacted by this. I took a look at that. I only show you-- I'm only showing you what the downtown, the impact on the downtown area.
Right.
But I don't believe it. I mean, and you get back to this. If it's really that critical, then why are you allowing restaurants at all to do within the 500 feet?
My thought was, you know, if it became a problem, maybe we should consider a special district, an overlay district, or, I don't know.
Well, it hasn't been a problem so far. The problem has been enforcement to make sure people aren't serving alcohol, and they shouldn't be--
Yeah.
--at this time. But I have not had any complaints. The school district gets a copy of our agenda. We haven't heard from them about this. So--
Yep. This, you know, this particular school here, there's-- they only butt up to one area, right, of the 14th Avenue? Isn't the rest of it--
It's the 500 feet. That graphic shows you the distance--
Yeah.
--from the school.
Yeah. But I'm thinking, you know, with all the zoning that goes around it, isn't the rest of it pretty much residential?
Well, the cultural arts village is probably going to get some changes to make it work.
Yeah.
And it is residential. And this would, as I said, but it is impacting the downtown. We do have non-residential commercial uses that are impacted by this. And as I said, I think it, you know, from economic development and a downtown enhancement--
Oh, yeah.
--I think it's a-- it has a dampening effect on it.
Yeah.
I mean, this is-- that school property is huge. And a lot of it is, you know--
It is.
But that's the state law, and we're following it.
And it's the property itself, not the buildings on the property. So it's the property.
That's correct. It's the property.
So the furthest extent of the properties where you put the 500-foot--
That's right.
And that makes the extension of that quite significant, even though the school is significantly a distance away, a significant distance away.
My thinking is, let's do this, and let's do it right, so that nobody's going to, you know, say, "Well, we should have done this or that."
Is-- my-- one of my thoughts is that I don't know where-- I don't understand why we're concerned with restaurants when they're serving 50%. Is it we-- is initially the fear-- is there fear that alcohol and children, they don't mix? Of course, I don't think that is.
Well--
The restaurant, you can take them to a restaurant, and they're sitting right there at the table, and their parents are having a drink. So-- but that's under supervision, I guess, as opposed to children just coming and going from the school. But I'm not even as sure there is a concern for me.
Well, I'm thinking like a liquor store, a bar. You know, it's harder to, I guess, harder to watch. I don't know. But I--
Well, I mean, again, we're following the Florida statutes. I mean--
The state statute requires that 51%.
That 51%.
That's pretty much across the country.
Yeah, we did. It's not ours, not our doing.
Take a look at that, or--
And if you remember, we used to have, within churches, we exclude-- we got rid of the church separation totally.
Right.
So we've had-- we've made some minor adjustments to this.
We drink in church.
And that's probably why we've made those minor adjustments.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Now, package stores and convenience centers--
They're already made a-- they're excluded under the state law.
Excluded.
Yes.
But even though they sell food items to go, prepared foods, sandwiches, that kind of thing, they're excluded. That's correct.
Right. When they have, like, these 7-11s, they're all, when they're selling beer, they're excluded, I believe, is one of these--
Because--
From there. They're one of the exemptions, yes.
Alcohol's taken off prices.
Right. That's correct.
Okay. And a second question is, how do they, if maybe you'll educate me, how do they audit the 51% rule? Who does that? Who takes that responsibility on--
The IRS.
Taxes, yeah.
Well, it'd be the alcohol beverage does that. And I assume that they have to provide records to them.
And that's at the state--
Yes. We're not doing that. No. That's--
That's not peculiar to just Florida.
No, no. That's a-- you're right about that.
Yeah. It affects insurance rates.
Yeah. That's how you define a restaurant versus a bar, is the 51%.
I'm kind of surprised there's no one here representing the cultural council group. Not council, but--
No, I know what you mean.
Cultural village, yeah.
The district.
Well, it's, you know, whether they were aware, I don't-- about that. I mean, talked about it, but as we go along to the hearing before the council, it's very possible they will.
I just, you know, I keep looking at this to say, is there anything that should be tweaked?
Right.
But obviously, this is your knowledge.
Well, I think the only other thing that would come on is the-- we do have the ability, and we're not proposing it right now at all, so please don't-- that would allow bars within that distance, but they would have to get City Council approval. We do not have provisions for that in our code. But that is allowed under the state statutes. There's provisions to do that. But you have to show it's in the public interest. The City Council votes on it. So it's a much higher level of approval.
I have no problem with this.
I can't-- I, as long as we manage the alcohol that's served, whether it's from a package store, or it's from a bar, or it's from a restaurant, in any form, as long as we manage it so that children are not exposed to it, I don't have a problem. I think that's where everything can break down, when you don't manage it as a municipality. I believe that's when we can have severe problems. And other than that, I don't have a problem with it either. Is there any further discussion on it, then? We open it up to the public?
You know, let me ask this question. When I think about the school buses and all the pickups and everything that parents do with this property, I'm not sure I understand the outline where the streets are going to be for the perimeter of the cultural center that's being proposed. Do we know what that is?
I believe it runs along 19th Street up to State Route 60, 19th Place, all the way over to 20th Avenue. I've seen different versions of it. So they're yet to go into charette and do a few other things. And I think they're gonna get into more of that. But I've seen some general ideas. It's eight, 10 blocks, I figure, on that. So--
Ken might have an answer for that one.
Does that include, like, the old diesel plant?
Mr. McGarry is close with his assessment.
Okay. Does that, like, go into the old diesel plant, that area in there, too?
The old diesel plant is outside this area.
It is. Okay.
That doesn't mean they wouldn't include the old--
Right.
You know, I'm just saying, it's outside the 500 feet here.
There's nothing prohibitum--
Oh, I meant the cultural district.
Yeah. I don't know. Mr. Dag probably knows better than I. I didn't recall that being in that area.
Okay.
There's nothing prohibitive from modifying that anytime until it's a done deal, right?
I'm sorry, modifying what?
The cultural district.
Oh, no. As I said, it's still in a formative stage. They're still looking at this whole thing.
Yeah. It's very fluid, if you understand.
Yeah. And I think they're going to have some, one or more charettes to deal with that, to get public input stakeholders. So I think you'll see more detail come out through that process. Yeah.
At this point in time, I think we'll open up to the public to make a comment. And seeing nobody coming forward from public comment, I'll immediately close public comment. Additional discussion from board members?
Done.
Done? Then we'll-- I'd like to have somebody call the question.
Call the question.
Okay.
We recommend approve staff's recommendation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And the third item on today's agenda, there's actually two--
Sherry, I'll do that for you.
There's actually two items on the last one.
I'll bring it up. I put it up.
Okay. Lost your audience.
I know. I lost my-- I only had two people, and I lost them both.
Oh, do you have the--
I do, yes.
I'm up, right?
You're up. We're okay. I was just going to read it. There are actually two, and I'm gonna read them simultaneously. An ordinance to the city of Vero Beach, Florida, amending the comprehensive plan, future, and use map by changing the land use designation of annexed land from Indian River County designation C/ I Commercial/Industrial to city of Vero Beach designation C Commercial for property located at 1660 and 1690 US Highway 1, containing 1.32 acres more or less. And the number on that one is C1500004FLUM, forgive me, MAP. And the second one, which we're going together, this will be a quasi judicial item, is an ordinance to the city of Vero Beach, Florida, amending the official zoning map by changing the zoning district designation of annexed land from Indian River County designation CG General Commercial to city of Vero Beach designation C1 Highway Oriented Commercial for property located at 1660 and 1690 US Highway 1, containing 1.32 acres more or less. And the number on that one is-- and the number on that one is Z1500007 MAP. And Sherry, move this one forward for us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we could do the ex parte-
Ex parte, because-
It's gonna treat the whole thing like a quasi judicial.
All right, it's quasi judicial. Um, disclosure by the planning and zoning board members, for any ex parte communications, if any, please identify.
I have none.
None. Swearing into the applicant, and that will be? Anybody, okay?
If you're gonna testify, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Any, any, Sherry's gonna take it over, right?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As mentioned, this is a request to change the future land use map and the zoning map to bring recently annexed parcels, um, that were annexed actually this morning by the city council, into the city's land use and zoning. So this is pretty much a, also an administrative type of activity, but, but, we'll go over briefly what the staff has prepared for you. The city council, several years ago, adopted a policy that when, um, we annex parcels into the city, we find the most comparable zoning and land use that was existing in the county to bring those, the land use and the, and the zoning into the city. We have done so in this case as well. Uh, as you, as you know, on, uh, and also on the map, the location of this parcel is the southeast intersection of 17th Street and US 1, and the existing land use is CI Commercial/Industrial in the county, and the existing zoning is CG General Commercial. This proposal, this request is to bring the land use to commercial, which is the city's land use, and, uh, C1 Commercial 1, Highway Oriented Commercial for, for the city's zoning. Both of those, the land use and the zoning are very compatible, in terms, or the closest compatible land use and zoning from the county's zoning district. So, in terms of being, it's fairly straightforward in that respect, in terms of the impacts, the, the location, as you, as, um, mentioned in the staff report and on the maps, a major intersection, US 1 and, uh, 17th Street, all the, um, the surrounding, uh, existing land use to the north, to the east, and to the west, our, our properties are in the city of Vero Beach, the land use is commercial, which is what we're requesting here. And the actual zoning, and at the location, is, um, in the city limits, the same properties are zoned C dash 1, so, once again, um, transitioning with the same, uh, zoning district. To the south, the property that still remains in, in the unincorporated county, that zoning is all CG Commercial/General, and the land use is also Commercial/Industrial. So every, all of that is, is compatible, with the staff looked at the, um, the land use and the zoning, um, changes, and, um, analyzed that against our comprehensive plan and our land development regulations, and the staff found all, um, that to be consistent, and, um, and we've outlined that in detail in the staff report, and we've also, uh, especially due to the location of the parcel, which is a major intersection, you've got surrounding properties that are compatible and similar to what the request is today, um, those are the two, the things that we mostly wanted to highlight in terms of being, um, very similar and compatible. Um, the condition to justify the amendments is obviously the, the, the recent annexation of the property. And Florida statutes, they do require us to bring those properties into the city and designate a land use and a rezoning, so that's really what we're doing here today. So with that, everything is, is fairly straightforward, and we've outlined all the details in the staff report, and, um, the staff is recommending approval of the change from county land use Commercial/Industrial to city commercial, and zoning from the county CG Commercial/General to the city's C1 Highway Oriented Commercial. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Staff have questions, I mean, board have questions of staff?
I have none.
I just have one. For clarification, we had an earlier city council meeting, they've already voted on this and passed it, correct?
They've actually voted to, they finalized the vote to actually annex the properties. This is the next step, to bring in the land use and the-
So we are in sequence?
You are, correct. And then the council will also hear this request to officially bring in the loan, the zoning and the land use.
So we're on a normal course?
Correct.
That's, that's all.
Correct.
All right. Questions?
Nope.
Seeing none, okay. Uh, the applicant, would you like to come forward and make a presentation?
Good afternoon, Todd Maury, representing the applicant, actually, you have a pretty, a great, a great staff report, so what I would really say is, when you look at this-
Would you state your name, and you were sworn in, did I miss it?
Oh, you missed it.
It's okay, Larry, thank you. I apologize, I didn't hear it.
No, no problem, again, it's Todd Maury.
I'm sorry, Todd.
And, uh, in looking at this, this is one where, when we examined the site, we met with both the city as well as the county, and realized pretty quickly, we wanted to make sure that this site was actually within side the city limits. So we went through the annexation this morning, and now we're at a point where rather than maintaining the county's land use and zoning, we need to have your approval. Always, we, we look at the similar compatible uses, and staff has done a great job on that. Consistency, compatibility, capability, those are really our three Cs we generally look at, and you all are dead on in terms of seeing exactly what's in place for this, so. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer those. There's a site plan that's already been prepared and ready to bring things in place, so we're ready to move forward and allow this to become a gem of a corner.
I have one question, please, sir. I didn't catch, what is, what do you do, what is your function?
I represent the applicant.
And what are you?
Uh, I'm actually a land planner and landscape architect.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think, we have no other questions, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I need to now open it up for a public comment, and seeing nobody in public comment, I'll immediately close public comment. Uh, any closing comments or arguments from the staff, anything you'd like to add?
No, I'm sorry, thank you.
Now from the applicant? I think we can move on to, uh-
Two motions.
Two motions?
Yes, you'll need two motions, as Tim had advised.
And we have-
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation on the comprehensive uh, plan for the future land use map.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
We have a first and a second, we have to take a roll call vote. Wait, this got, no discussion on it, correct? Okay.
Mr. Dag?
Yes.
Mr. Kahoy?
Yes.
Ms. Polansky?
Yes.
Mrs. Manous?
Yes.
Mr. Lauffer?
Yes.
Passes five to zero.
Now we have the second part of that.
Okay, then I'll make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation to amend the, um, official zoning map.
We have a second?
A second.
Robin seconds? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll go for a vote.
Mr. Dag?
Yes.
Mr. Kahoy?
Yes.
Ms. Polansky?
Yes.
Mrs. Manous?
Yes.
Mr. Lauffer?
Yes.
Passes five to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Todd?
Thank you, welcome.
Yes. Are there any planning department matters?
Um, we just have one, um, one item coming up on, uh, the July 16th meeting. Two items, oh, excuse me, two items, I was just looking at mine. No, we have two items coming up for you, so we do have a meeting scheduled for the 16th.
16th?
Recycle.
Oh.
Any, any board member matters?
I have none.
Seeing none?
Um, one little reminder, Peggy, um, there were some questions about competent and substantial